The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin at around 7:00 p.m. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed-session items. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on closed-session agenda items?
There is no public comment on closed-session items.
Seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. Good evening. My name is Eve Reiser, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Francisco Mesa and Ashley Heil. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear their instructions.
Buenos días y bienvenidos a todos. Servicios de interpretación simultánea en español están disponibles para escuchar esta reunión. Para escuchar en español, en un momento va a haber un icono de un globo terráqueo en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Una vez que aparezca, haga clic en el icono y luego seleccione la opción de escuchar en español. Muchas gracias, y la reunión comenzará en breve.
Thank you. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes. Student Board Member De Ressa Cifuentes?
Present.
Trustee Reiser?
Present.
Trustee Chu?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Martin?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Quorum present. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight for our NVUSD Board meeting. E1, Report on Closed Session. Trustee Chu, do you have a report on closed-session agenda items?
I do. Item E1, under Personnel. In closed session, the board took action to approve the following staff recommendation effective the 2025-2026 school year. On a motion by Trustee Water and seconded by me, the board voted 5-0 to appoint Brian Howard to the position of Principal at American Canyon Middle School. Votes were: Trustee Reiser, aye; Trustee Chu, aye; Trustee Gonzalez-Mars and Trustee Hart were absent; Trustee Jankowicz, aye; Trustee Martin, aye; Trustee Water, aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's see. I need someone to lead us in the flag salute. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, Dr. Masetti.
Yeah, thank you. So I believe Mr. Howard is here tonight, our new appointee for ACMS principalship. I'd like to invite you to come up to the podium and provide you with the opportunity to address the board.
Thank you. Good evening, Napa Valley Unified School District. It is with great excitement and gratitude that I introduce myself, Brian Howard, as the new principal of American Canyon Middle School. I want to thank the Napa Valley Unified School Board of Education, Superintendent Masetti, and trustees, all the trustees, and entrusting me with the opportunity to serve the incredible school community. I'm honored to be offered the principalship at American Canyon Middle School. I bring over 25 years of experience as a teacher, assistant principal, principal of elementary, middle school, and high school, and a coordinator of college and career programs, partnering with district leadership staff, students and families, and the community to build a strong foundation of academic excellence. My leadership style is centered on collaboration, shared decision-making, and supporting both staff and students. I'm especially drawn to the American Canyon Middle School's diversity and its commitment to academic excellence. I'm excited by this opportunity to build on the great work that's already been done and to serve a community that values equity, innovation, and student voice. Thank you for this opportunity to serve the American Canyon Middle School community.
You're welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Howard, to the NVUSD Leadership Team. Thank you.
Okay, so now E2, Flag Salute. May I ask Trustee Martin to please lead us in the flag salute?
One, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. E3, Announcement. This meeting is live-streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. E4, Approval of Agenda. We are going, I'm going to propose an adjustment to our agenda that we move the retiree presentation, which is J1A, to be for item F on our agenda. Can I get a motion with that as adjusted?
Move to approve.
We have a first from Trustee Martin, a second from Trustee Jankowicz. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Stay? Motion passes. E5, Approval of Minutes. We do not have any minutes to approve for this meeting. E6, Recognition of Visitors and Employee Organizations. Dr. Masetti, do we have any visitors in attendance?
We do. First of all, I just want to thank all of the visitors that are here to support our retirees. I know we have many family members and friends of our retirees present tonight, so thank you so much for demonstrating your support and being here to celebrate them. In addition, I know that the president of the Napa Valley Educators Association, President Deb St. Clair, is here. Ms. St. Clair, would you like to come and address the board or say anything? Okay, great. I did not see Ms. Jackie Clayton. There's a lot of people here, so I just want to make sure I don't miss her. I don't think she's here. Okay, that's it for visitors tonight, President Reiser.
Wonderful. So that brings us to item J1A, which is the recognition of retirees presentation. Assistant Superintendent Dana Page of Human Resources will take it from here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we gather to honor the remarkable individuals who are retiring from the Napa Valley Unified School District. These dedicated professionals have left an indelible mark, shaping lives, building futures, and contributing to the growth of our community through decades of service. Collectively, this amazing group of retirees has given over 248 years of service to NVUSD, a testament to their dedication and commitment. From the classroom to technology, from special education to inspiring language learning, each retiree has played a vital role in preparing our students for the challenges ahead. The wide array of positions and years of service among NVUSD retirees highlights their extensive contributions across both student-facing and support roles. In the classroom, positions range from kindergarten teachers, serving over a decade, to culinary educators specializing in career technical education. Classified individuals also worked closely with students, such as instructional assistants providing personal care for nearly two decades, and one independence facilitator has actually worked at every school site in the district over their extensive career. Support roles played an equally vital part in the district's success. For example, retirees served as school administrative secretaries for 17 years, cafe managers ensuring daily nourishment for students for over 13 years, and senior accounting specialists handling financial operations for 20 years. These contributions demonstrate the essential teamwork and required across instructional and operational departments to foster a thriving school environment. Retirees, as you step into retirement, let us recognize this pivotal transition. Retirement marks the beginning of a new chapter. It's a time for reflection on your many achievements and contributions, a chance to explore passions and pursue new adventures. May it also be a time to enjoy the company of loved ones, celebrate the milestones behind you, and embark on a journey filled with discovery ahead. We have a little video presentation which includes all of our retirees from across the district, and then we have some who are able to join us today that will do a special presentation of a plaque, but please enjoy the whole array of our retirees for 2025.
All right, thank you so much. We are very excited that we have some of our retirees here in person to collect their plaque. And I hope, let's see. If I miss anybody who's here, please let me know. But we're going to start with Anna Arastegui. Anna, are you here? You just arrived. Perfect timing, Anna. Come on up here. We have a plaque for you. Congratulations. Thank you so much for your service. All right. And our next retiree, a teacher from Willow Elementary School, Donna Bowles. Is Donna here? Oh, okay. Maybe Donna didn't make it. All right, and from our Special Education Department, we have Leigh Anne Conklin. Leigh Anne? Thank you. Also from our Special Education Department, we have Sally Costello. Congratulations, Sally. And from Food Service, we have Jenny DeCayo. Congratulations, Jenny. You saw her earlier. From Vintage High School, PE teacher Robin Delzampo. All right, and an Independence Facilitator with the honor of working at every single one of our schools, we have Leslie Hadad. Leslie, congratulations. All right. Also from our Special Education Department, we have Robin Lanier. Robin, congratulations. Congratulations, Robin. From Vintage High School, also PE department, I don't know if we saw her here. Heidi Ring Smith. Okay, she didn't make it tonight. We'll get her her plaque. From Special Education, from our preschool, our Special Education preschool, we have Kendra Lynn Sittler. Kendra, are you here? Congratulations. Wonderful. Congratulations. Another esteemed colleague from the Special Education Department, we have Margot Slack. Margot, congratulations. A longtime teacher from Canyon Oaks Elementary School, Katherine Treadaway. All right, and from Napa High School, it was not a type, I think it was 35 years, is that right, Maestra Vega? Come on up here, Maria Elena Vega from Napa High. Thank you. All right, from American Canyon High School, supporting in our Special Education Department, we have Maria Isabel Valesquez de Contreras. From Donaldson Way Elementary School, we have teacher Betty Whitehead. Congratulations. And from Vintage High School again, we have Patricia Wojcik. Come on up, Patricia. Congratulations. Thank you. And last but certainly not least, we have Rita Abud, who will be spending more time with those cute little grandbabies you saw in that picture. Oh, we had one more. I'm sorry, that was not our last one. Congratulations, Rita. All right, and we have, we do now have one more. Michael O'Toole, who's a library media tech from Redwood Middle School. Congratulations, Michael. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you to our retirees for your enduring dedication to NVUSD, and congratulations on this new season of life. The legacy you leave behind is immeasurable, and it has been an honor to work alongside you. You are forever part of the foundation upon which this district stands. Thank you so much for your service, and enjoy your retirement. Congratulations. I think we might take just a brief pause if those who've gathered here to celebrate the retirees are not interested in remaining for the rest of the board meeting. Come on now. I promise it's compelling, and you will love it. But if you have other plans, now is the time to exit.
the time to exit. We are now at item F, recognitions of the students of the month. We have Valley Oak High School first.
There we go. Good afternoon. Well, we know how to clear a room. So again, congratulations to all the retirees. The number of years of commitment to our youth in the Napa Valley is just to be commended. It was great to see some of my former partners in Eppah High and then also some of my daughter's teachers who are retiring tonight. So again, congratulations. I am so excited to share with you just a historic year for Valley Oak, especially for the class of 2025. Last Tuesday evening, in our beautiful Christmas garden, we honored our graduates through the scholarship assembly. About close to $60,000 was distributed that night. Our kids were just amazing, 130-plus people present, and so it was just a beautiful, beautiful evening, and we can't wait to celebrate them again, my graduation. And NVIS, which I'll also be presenting afterwards, we'll celebrate them at the graduation. So graduations are upon us, and I cannot believe it's the end of the school year and graduations are not too far away. So get ready. I'm sure as the board members, you're ready to go, right? Because you're going to be there. So, all right, so without further ado, I am so excited to introduce to you tonight from Valley Oak two amazing young people that have, both of them actually joined us in the fall, and immediately they became leaders, just outstanding in so many different ways. And so I'd like to bring Stephanie Segura-Avila up here first. I had her teacher share a few words with me because she spends most of her time with them. I had the opportunity to spend some time with her as she served on the NVUSD Student Advisory Panel, or a group, so it's great to see her through that process and her growth. She is a dedicated and respectful student who excels in teamwork, known for her consistent efforts. She tackles challenging tasks with determination and always strives for excellence. A natural leader, she takes initiative and supports her peers, serves as role models in class. Beyond academics, she eagerly takes on extra responsibilities and school-wide activities, hence being a representative on the advisory committee. Her teachers commend her work ethic, positive influence that brings, that she brings to both the elderly English class and her world history classes. She demonstrates exceptional focus and willingness to assist, especially in tutoring sessions. Her considerate nature is evident in her interactions, showing kindness and patience to everyone, particularly in challenging situations. She is praised for her impeccable manners. That's a, you know, Ms. Markle word, she loves the word impeccable. Thoughtful communication reflecting her conscientious approach in all endeavors, including her outstanding performance in mathematics, where she has received recognition for perseverance and proactive learning attitude. And again, we're excited to have her speak to you tonight and represent Valley Oak High School. So you ready?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Segura, and I'm a junior at Valley Oak High School. First of all, I would like to thank the Board of Trustees and the Napa Valley Education Foundation for this recognition. I would like to also thank my parents for their unconditional support throughout my educational journey. Last but not least, I would like to thank the entire Valley Oak High School staff for always being there for me and encouraging to do my best. I have attended Irene Snow M Elementary School, Harvest Middle School, Napa High School, and then transferred to Valley Oak High School. The academic courses I have enjoyed and found success are English and math. I feel the reason for this is my teachers. They make it easy to understand the material presented in class. I transferred to Valley Oak to earn credits sooner. I feel I'm turning things around by being focused on my schoolwork to obtain my goal of graduating early. My plans after high school are to first take a break by going to work, as I would like to help my parents out. I plan to enroll in college eventually and study marine biology because I am interested in learning about the different animals and how they maintain themselves living in the ocean. As far as jobs, I'm interested in continuing to help my mom doing housekeeping before going to college. This summer, I will help a friend of my mom cleaning houses. Once I have my degree, I would like to find a job at an aquarium. One of the things I'm most proud of about my experiences at Valley Oak is meeting my teachers that are always very helpful and understanding. Once again, thank you very much to the Board of Trustees and the Napa Valley Education Foundation for this recognition. Have a great evening.
One, two, three, one, two. Okay. Our next student is a junior, Miguel Angel. I think he's got the name of a poet, and when you hear him speak, you'll know why I say that. Miguel Angel is coming up. Again, you know, I had to go to the experts to share a little, a few words about you with me. Miguel Angel is a dedicated and thoughtful student who consistently again demonstrates that strong work ethic, a positive attitude, and unwavering commitment in math and in leadership. In Math I, he approached the challenges with perseverance, always putting in an effort to understand the material, not just to do it, but to actually understand what he was doing and never hesitating to ask questions as needed. His dedication to his studies were truly admirable. In leadership, Miguel Angel's quality shines even brighter. He eagerly supports classmates with or assisted with a group project or offering guidance. His willingness to take on tasks make him a dependable and valued team member. Beyond his academic strengths, Miguel Angel's kindness, politeness, and respect for others create a positive classroom environment. He treats everyone with thoughtfulness, consistency, consistently setting an excellent example for his peers. He stands out as someone with a unique confident, quiet confidence earned from embracing his individuality. His empathy, compassion, and critical thinking make him a rare and exceptional young man. He reflects thoughtfully on his place and purpose in the world, demonstrating rare qualities of a young male. Miguel Angel is not only a hardworking and considerate student, but also someone who leads by example, making him truly the cool guy in every sense, and it's in capital letters. You know, that's for Mr. Mountner, right? All right.
Hello, my name is Miguel Angel, or just Miguel for short. I would like to thank all of you guys for, you know, letting me come here, tell the speech, and every one of you guys for being here and hearing my speech. When I was younger, I had a goal, which was to be the best at everything, and that was a goal to chase, and even bigger goal, which was to help my family. That goal now sits at the back of my head, mainly because it's still in process. And I've been able to become stronger emotionally, mentally, physically, and especially stronger as a person, as an individual. And of course, I've had my roadblocks along the way, especially with school, with my life, with my own mental health, and my own existence. But I've been able to overcome everything with the help of the people around me, and my family, and my mom here today in the back, they're recording. And overall, school was a pretty big, a pretty big part of my challenges, mainly because before I came to Valley Oak, I was actually a straight zero GPA student because of my choices and wrongdoings. But over time, I was able to become better. And at first, when I came to Valley Oak, I thought I would be able to just live off my own, you know, parents and stuff like that, probably how most people, you know, come to Valley Oak and think they could just do whatever they want. Well, not at Valley Oak. At Valley Oak, they change you, they shape you to be a better person, to be a prodigy. You don't come there to just, you know, feed off the breadcrumbs of the winners or the successors. You come there to become better, to become just the person you want to be, the person you see in your dreams, the person you see in miracles, movies, whatever you think of. And as of now, I think I've become someone that's semi, you know, a successor. I'm a junior, not a senior, but I'm, it's a step closer to graduating and becoming the person I've always wanted to become. And hopefully soon, I'll be able to get into the position I want, which is actually a veterinary scientist, which is something I'm studying into. I'm getting more into the medical field, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Narros for helping me learn more in that, and Ms. Lamarcus, who isn't here, but they both have helped me to become just a very smart person overall. And hopefully, when I graduate, I can get into those roles, and hopefully, all of you guys remember that Valley Oak was the reason I got into it. Thank you.
This year, we, you know, you go through the self-study, you do, you take a deep look, and it's amazing. Thank you so much for your words, both Stephanie and Miguel Angel. All right, onto Napa Valley Independent Studies, another amazing program in our district, and I am always so incredibly proud of the fact that NVUSD provides such opportunities for students, because not everyone walks the same path or marches to the same beat. And so to be able to have two programs that really resonate and connect with a kid's ability to explore their learning process, it's really a gift, and it's even a bigger gift for me that I get to lead that. So our first student, I'm going to have Yanelli Carnella to come on up. Yanelli is actually in our American Canyon High School program with Ms. Wilson, and so we got to spend a few minutes on Zoom, just kind of chatting and having an informal conversation. But again, you know, Ms. Wilson does such an amazing job with all of her students there that I have to share her words because she knows her best. So for the past three years, Yanelli has attended NVIS. When she joined NVIS, she was shy, quiet, and timid. Fast forward to now, Yanelli has grown into a confident young lady. When she started, she had a 1.5 GPA and was behind 25 credits. Currently, she has a 3.5 GPA and will be walking the stage with us in just a few days. As part of her growth, she is confident in her ability to succeed. While at times, her life was hard, it did not get her down. She chose to persevere, always keep an eye on the goal of graduation. A few things have always been evident in Yanelli, and I know that they will continue through her life. Her commitment to her family, her love of cats, and her compassion for others. I'm so proud of Yanelli, and I'm looking forward to hearing about the difference she will make in the future. So without further ado, Ms. Yanelli.
And look at her, she's got cards. Oh, genius.
Good evening, everybody. To start off, I want to give a big thank you to the NVUSD School Board, Napa Valley Education Foundation, and NVIS for using this time as an opportunity to recognize the progress and accomplishments I've made so far. My name is Yanelli Carnella, and I'm in my final year as a senior at the Napa Valley Independent Studies. My sophomore year at ACHS, I found myself undeniably struggling with being able to not only adapt to what is considered a public school, but the curriculum. However, with the help from the counselors at ACHS, I enrolled at the Napa Valley Independent Studies. Immediately after enrolling with NVIS, I found myself finally being able to breathe. Now that I had the opportunity to breathe, I quickly realized I went from constantly having to distract myself from having panic attacks in bathroom stalls and navigating the turmoil of my depression as a teenager, to recognizing the potential and worth within Although I never thought it was possible, I gained and acknowledged my own independence within my education. After my upcoming graduation this June, finally, I will be attending the Napa Valley College to earn my degree in mechanical engineering, and currently looking forward to the different options in becoming a marine biologist. The amazing support and guidance I've received from teachers, staff, my mother, family, and friends, thank you.
Our next student is Lene Delfonso Torres. It's our other student. Do you want to come up? The whole front row is her fan club, okay? So I expect a little, like, you know, baseball cheer at the end. All right. So Lene joined Independent Studies in January of this year? Wow, okay. As a junior, it has been, it has been clear since the beginning of her time here, as she exemplifies what it means to be a successful Independent Studies student. She actually is in the virtual option. She's with Ms. Lucero. In just one semester, she has been able to earn additional credits, taking seven classes in order to reach her goal of transferring back to Napa High School for her senior year. Outside of school, she has a passion for baking, so we're thinking about pastry chef as a career. She recently got accepted to the summer mentor program through Napa Valley Education Foundation and will spend her summer learning and exploring new career paths. Her teacher, Mrs. Lucero, is proud of the work she has accomplished thus far in such a short time at NVIS, and is excited to see what the future holds for her. Our world is in great hands with people like her leading the way.
Hi, my name is Lene Delfonso, and I'm a junior, and this is my first year, first semester in Independent Studies. I first want to start off by giving a big thanks to Ms. Cisneros, the NVUSD School Board, and the Napa Valley Education Foundation, and especially my family, my mom, for always supporting me. Before this, I attended Napa High School, but I found the fast pace and heavy workload overwhelming, especially for my mental health. So Independent Studies has been a great change for me because I feel that it allows me to work at my own pace, focus better, and have time for both school and family. I also really appreciate the one-on-one support from teachers like Ms. Lucero, who nominated me. I really enjoyed these I really enjoy these classes because I feel that they allow me to be creative, independent, and independent. After high school, I plan to attend the Napa Valley College and explore something in culinary or sonography. Um, because baking has been a passion of mine since I was very young, thanks to my aunt. Overall, I'm proud of how far I've come, and I'm excited for what's next. Thank you.
Congratulations again to all of our Students of the Month from Valley Oak and Independent Studies. And if you would like to take a moment now, unless you want to stay for the rest of the board meeting, but you can feel free to, to excuse yourselves if you'd like to have somewhere else to be. Okay, that brings us to G, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Trustee Chu, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
No public comments on non-agenda items were submitted via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org before 8:00 a.m. this morning.
Thank you. Before I open the floor to public comment on non-agenda items, I'd like to explain the rules that govern this area of the meeting. The Brown Act open-meeting laws under which we are required to operate prohibit board members from discussing items that you may bring up that are not on our current agenda. The reason for this legal restriction is to make sure that anyone who has an interest in a particular district business matter knows through the board's posted agenda when we will be discussing it as a board, so that they can also be present and provide input on the item. We're very happy to have you here to let us know your concerns. Please know that while we cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, we are listening to your voices, and we expect and know that our staff will follow up with us on issues raised by members of the community. Relevant to the remainder of the board agenda, please understand that the board listens and considers public comment on the agendized items during our meeting. However, public comment is not intended to be a two-way dialogue between the public and board members and/or staff. And therefore, trustees will not respond to individual comments. This is in accordance with our meeting procedures. We invite members of the public to provide input via public comment per our Board Bylaw 9323 regarding meeting agenda items. We welcome and appreciate the public's engagement and input. Thank you for being here. And in sum, please know that your voice matters and makes a difference. Your public comment on agendized items might be referenced during our discussions and will be considered as we make decisions regarding agendized items. So that being said, we do have some comments here in the boardroom. I will start with, uh, Raquel. I'm sorry, I can't quite read that. Gattby?
Gatto.
Gatto, I'm sorry.
No worries. Hi, I'm Raquel Gatto. Thank you Superintendent Masetti, President Reiser, and Board Trustees for your time tonight. As you may or may not remember, I am a parent of an NVUSD elementary student, and I spoke at the last regular board meeting to share concerns about a policy in place at some district elementary school campuses that prevents parents from walking onto campus before the morning bell and/or after the last bell in the afternoon. I'm here tonight to report on activity related to this topic since the last meeting. Assistant Superintendent Reddy was able to work with at least one principal to reverse the restriction against kindergarten parents walking onto campus with their students. She also shared board policies and administrative relate, reg, you'll, sorry, and administrative regulations about, um, visitors and outsiders on campuses. We appreciate and thank staff for these steps in the right direction. That said, our ultimate goal is for elementary school parents who want to walk their children onto campus before the bell to be able to do so. We prepared a high-level roadmap for how to achieve that and are waiting for feedback from district staff on its feasibility from a time and resource standpoint. I have a copy that I can share with you guys for reference. We are sympathetic to the fact that district staff has many competing priorities, but we believe the evidence bears out that ensuring low-friction campus access to parents will serve the best interests of the district in the near and long terms related to stable enrollment, positive student outcomes, test scores, fundraising efforts, and parent volunteerism. We understand that a one-size-fits-all approach may not be feasible, but many campuses in our district do accommodate parental access before instruction starts each day. In keeping with the district's core values of equity and access for students, staff, and families, and relationships built through trust and belonging, we are committed to working with staff to develop a system that keeps parental access procedures as consistent as possible from school site to school state. Providing equal rights and opportunities for families across the district should be a top priority. Thank you, and can I?
Thank you. Next, we have Ariana Irvin.
Hello, NVUSD School Board members and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Ariana, and my son is a kinder student at NVLA. I'm glad to be back to continue this important conversation around parental access to elementary school campuses across our district. Like Raquel, I'm encouraged by the recent shift in policy at one school site regarding kindergarten access. It's a small but meaningful step in the right direction. However, our ultimate goal is to create a district-wide equitable policy that allows all elementary school parents the option to walk their children onto campus in the morning before the first bell rings. I'd like to briefly speak to the notion of safety, as it is often cited as the primary reason for limiting campus access. While safety is an essential priority, it's important to note that safety is not a policy in itself. It's a value that should be clearly defined and thoughtfully implemented. And I would argue that restricting parental presence on campus in the mornings may actually undermine safety in several key ways. Safety through community familiarity. We're all safer when we know one another. Much like in Neighborhood Watch, having parents visibly present builds trust and awareness. When staff, teachers, and families have the opportunity to build relationships and recognize familiar faces, it creates a stronger, more connected community and makes it easier to notice when something out of the ordinary is happening. Emotional safety for students. Research consistently shows that children thrive when they feel emotionally secure. Allowing parents or guardians to walk children onto campus helps maintain the important bridge between home and school. It sends the message that families are involved, invested, and connected to their child's daily experience. Physical safety through supervision. Our educators and administrators do incredible work, but they can't be everywhere at once. Parental presence during morning drop-off can help deter bullying or unsafe behavior that can arise when large groups of children are interacting without enough adult oversight. Accountability and shared responsibility. Schools function best when there's a healthy partnership between families and staff. Having parents present helps create a broader network of adult accountability, adding another layer of care and awareness for how all children are treated. And finally, I want to emphasize the importance of equity. If we believe that some families and some schools benefit from morning or afternoon campus access, then we must believe that all families and all students deserve the same opportunity, regardless of which school they attend. We fully support the district in taking whatever thoughtful steps are needed to ensure this access is managed responsibly. But we owe it to our students and our community to ensure those opportunities are extended fairly and consistently. Thank you again for your time and for your continued commitment to our students and families.
Thank you. And Mikey Kelly, next commenter.
Uh, good evening, board members. Uh, just, I'm here quickly to reiterate that we need to close the gap on the waitlists in aftercare. By example, Boys and Girls Club last year had over 2,600 students, but had over 250 students on a waitlist. That's 250 families just in Boys and Girls Club that had unreliable access to aftercare. Again, with the rising cost of living here in the valley, aftercare is an essential part of education and schools. Boys and Girls Club, I know through their, uh, ELOP proposal states that the kids within Boys and Girls Club actually do better in school, that their learning is improved over just the time that a normal average student spends at school. So I'm looking for the board and staff to try to work together with principals and with the schools to make space so that these, uh, programs can staff up and that no child's left behind with the, uh, need of aftercare. That's such a vital thing these days. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Green, is there any public comment on non-agenda items online?
There is no public comment on non-agenda items.
Okay, thank you. So now, this brings us to H Reports. H1, Board of Education and Student Board Representative. Uh, Student Board Member, Teresa Cifuentes, would you like to start us off?
Uh, good evening, board members. Um, so we have a lot of events in Vinge this week, actually. It's been really busy. But, uh, we had our end-of-the-year production the last weekend that, I didn't, I didn't go, but I heard it was really great. And, uh, Monday, we had our scholarship ceremony. So I'd like to extend a thank you to community donors who helped give out over $125,000 in scholarships, so that was really cool. And we also had a signing day yesterday, and it was really cool to see all the amazing schools that my peers were going to commit to next year. And as well as today was a reclassification ceremony for our English learners. That was really fun. And, uh, yesterday, I also went to my sister, my little sister's open house at McPherson Elementary. And I got to see the new principal. She seems really nice. I'm excited for what she'll do there. And the school as well with their new magnet program. And we're also gonna have our Avid Celebration, where the seniors are gonna have our stools put on by our parents, which is really cute. Yeah, and, um, as well as our Seela by Literacy for, uh, ASL, French, and Spanish will be also on the 29th. As well as other, uh, performing arts, such as a philharmonic for band and, uh, the choir concert and a drama show. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you so much. Trustee Water?
Thank you, President Reiser, and thank you for a great report. Let's see, well, I did the usual constituent outreach, and I did a lot of reading about technology over the last few weeks. And on May 10th, I saw The 39 Steps at Napa Valley College starring a former Napa High student, Gio Perez. It was very funny, and he was awfully good. May 13th, I attended with my colleagues the State of the District, which was held here at Napa High School. Uh, it was the best ever, and I particularly enjoyed to see, seeing the focus on our students. That was, that was, uh, just, uh, very enjoyable. May 14th, I attended the Curriculum Committee meeting, and then I also went to the Napa Valley College Scholarship Event, where I saw many former Napa Valley Unified School District, uh, students get scholarships so they could pursue their education after leaving Napa Valley College. On May 15th, I toured Oxbow School with staff from Napa Valley Education Foundation and Dr. Masetti and Trustees Reiser and Jankowitz. And it's very exciting, uh, what's going to be happening there that will benefit our students, and they'll tell you more. On May 20th, I visited Silverado Middle School and Ms. Aaron's and Ms. Tisher's classes and the library. I had a, uh, where I didn't, where I saw steady sync in action, and I did not see, um, a slavish, I'm sorry, Mikey Kelly is not here. I did not see a slavish, uh, fol, um, use of technology. I saw people, uh, actually writing with pencils on paper and using real books. And, um, the library also showed off a new selection of books they had, they had, um, recently received. And I had a group of delightful student ambassadors take me around, and they made sure I didn't starve to death, and they answered all my questions. And one is over at Napa High School right now, uh, at the Film Festival, where he got to walk the red carpet promoting his film. Also had a facilities operation tech meeting, very illuminating. I'm excited about all the school improvements that are going to be occurring thanks to, um, this community passing a school bond. On May 21st, I went to the Napa County Office of Education Reception honoring school employees. And I saw my old colleague, excuse me, my former colleague, Martha Calderon, receive her well-deserved Napa County Teacher of the Year Award and many other, um, school workers. And I was, you know, just, it was really heartwarming to see, you know, how much, um, these recipients care about our students. Then I went to the Alta Heights Open House, which is always fun, and trustee, trustee John Henry Martin will tell you more about that. And then today, May 22nd, I made a short visit to the Napa Library, and I'm here now. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I wasn't planning on talking about Alta Heights, but I think I will. Uh, on, yesterday, I went to the Alta Heights Open House. It was, um, it was amazing. There was a Under the Sea Room with black lights. And so you felt like I was in Disneyland going through with all these glowing fish and things, jellyfish hanging from the ceilings. It was amazing. Then they had an Aztec, uh, dance band with drums and smoke that were supposed to evoke the spirits and the energy coming in from them, these feathers going around. It was, the food was incredible. It was absolutely wonderful. Ted Ward did a great job. Is that good enough?
Yeah, it's great. That's great.
All right, so, um, it has, uh, in addition to that, it's been a very theatrical two weeks since our last board meeting. I attended the, Tuesday 13th, I attended the very theatrical, uh, State of the District presentation. It was amazing. On Wednesday the 14th, along with trustee Reiser, I attended a performance of 101 Dalmatians at Willow Elementary School. That was amazing. On Friday the 16th, I attended a performance of Moana Junior at Redwood Middle School. That, in addition, was amazing. Uh, American Canyon High School won a Sarah Burellis Award for Best Performance for Hades Town. They will be performing at the award ceremony at the Orpheum in San Francisco. Congratulations to them. That's amazing. Theater is, I, as, having been a theater critic for the Napa Valley Register and covered, covering NVUSD theater for about five years, I've come to the conclusion that theater is the best preparation for life a young person can have. Students learn teamwork, accountability, self-confidence, as well as how to speak, listen, and sing. NVUSD provides opportunities for students to create theater at every age, elementary, middle, and high school. That is amazing. Uh, now it's time for my memorization project. Let's see, the mission of the Napa Valley Unified School District is to, oh, no, uh, is to prepare each student for a successful future by developing literacy and career-ready skills that cultivate students' interest, build resilience, compassion, and confidence. And that concludes my report.
Very theatrical board report, trustee Martin. Thank you. Trustee Jankowitz?
Um, I did not have a theatrical two weeks. I did attend the State of the District, and if you did not attend, I highly suggest you take the time to view the video. In practicality, it was a progress report, but in reality, it was an inspired reflection of all the hard work that occurred over this last school year. Dr. Masetti highlighted the district's progress and strategic direction and vision. It was an opportunity to celebrate achievements, remind our community of our shared goals, and showcase student voice and accomplishments. I think everyone walked out of Napa High gym feeling very proud to be a part of NVUSD. I toured, along with Dr. Masetti, um, trustee Reiser, and, uh, President Reiser and trustee Water, our new Napa Valley Ed Foundation location at Oxbow. It's an incredible location. Jennifer Stewart gave us snapshots into what she envisions, but they're still going to, um, have a, take some time to decide how they want to best leverage, um, Oxbow. And I look forward to the magic that NBF, N-B-E-F will create on behalf of the students of Napa County. I had my trustee check in with Dr. Masetti. I left on Thursday the 15th for Sacramento, where I attended the Board of Directors meeting for CSBA. We reviewed policy, legislation, and discussed goal-setting. On Saturday, our Region 3 delegates arrived, and trustee Hart isn't here this evening, but trustee Hart is part of that delegation. And we reviewed the four policy pillars, uh, secure fair funding, improve conditions of children, strengthen local local governance, and ensure achievement for all. My questions were centered on federal funding and what percentage of our budget comes from federal dollars. And we discussed potential impact if we should lose those dollars. And thank you to Assistant Superintendent Manguala for giving us insight and providing his perspective on those prompts. I attended the May Revise webinar. I attended the Facilities and Technology Board Advisory Committee meeting. I attended the Legislative Update Call with Chris Reeve, who's a CSBA political consultant. I attended the Legislative Policy Call today with Senator Chris Calbedon, with a focus on Prop 98 and universal transition kindergarten. And I too continue with my community engagement. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Chu?
Yes, I also attended the State of the District on the 13th, and the Board Advisory Curriculum and Student Support Meeting on the 14th. This Wednesday, May 20th, I actually dropped in on the ALPS Showcase at Canyon Oaks, where students from all three elementary schools of American Canyon got to showcase their work this year. And I learned a whole bunch of things, from how to be a professional baseball player, to a wonderful overview of U.S. history, the blue macaw, and the mayfly. And I think the teachers on the board would be very glad to know. I had learned one key thing is that the mayfly only lives for one day. And it's, yes, yes. And I also want to congratulate the ACHS Drama Department for winning the Best Overall Performance at the inaugural Sarah Bareilles Award for Hattie's Town, and I know most of us attended. And I just want to highlight how important this is, because this is a regional competition that is affiliated with the Jimmy Awards of the National High School Musical Theater Awards Program. So kudos to that program and Ms. Hart for putting in all the blood, sweat, and tears, and all the students for making it happen. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. A lot of overlap here, so I'll be brief. I too attended the State of the District event. I agree with trustee Water. I think it was the best ever. And I wanted to particularly call out, not only did we have our usual performance by the host, school's a cappella group, but we also had a contribution to the event from the Art Department at Napa High. And students collaboratively created a mural plan and got involvement from other students and other sites within the district and created, yes, I will, thank you very much. I don't know if you can see it, but this is a miniature of the mural that right now is living in the, in Napa High. I'm not sure permanently or not. But it was such a creative addition to the event, to have the visual arts here. I can pass this up, and maybe people in the audience could take a look. So that was a particularly nice touch. And as well as the student panel, which was a new aspect of the event, really showcasing the way that we center student voice, and really want to hear from our customers about their experience, what they're, what they, what they want to share with us, both their victories and maybe their concerns and challenges. So that was also a really special aspect of that event. On the 14th, as trustee Martin mentioned, we attended together the wonderful production of 101 Dalmatians at Willow Elementary. Thank you to Principal Dunn and the hard-working teachers and crew, and the cast of Canines that really made it a fun night. On May 15th, I also was part of the tour of the Oxbow School, former Oxbow School, new campus of the NVEF. So grateful to Jennifer Stewart, the Director of NVEF, and all of her meaningful and important partnerships that support the work that we do here. So very excited to see how that program develops and how they bloom with that beautiful space. On the 16th of May, I had a Governance Development, Leadership Development Training Call, along with Vice President Chu and Superintendent Masetti, with our Arbinger facilitator. Really enjoying that ongoing work. On the 19th, I had a check-in call as Board President with our Governance Facilitator from CSBA, Luanne Rivera, in advance of our Superintendent Evaluation Session that is upcoming. On May 20th, I participated in the Inclusive and Welcoming Schools Steering Committee Meeting. Such a valuable opportunity to come together with, across the community of NVUSD and the broader community, to think about who are the students that we're serving, and how can we connect with them and make sure that they feel that they belong here, that they know that they belong here, and that they experience belonging here. So really valuable work underway there, and I'm grateful to be a part of it. On the May 21st, I had my regular Board, Board President check in with Dr. Superintendent in advance of this, with Dr. Masetti, the Superintendent, in advance of this meeting. Dr. Superintendent Masetti. I kind of like it. And then also, in the afternoon, thank you to Dr. Nemco and her staff for the wonderful celebration of Napa County's great school employees across the county. It's so important to acknowledge and celebrate the hard work of everyone that works in our school systems. And in particular, I would like to congratulate our NVUSD honorees. We had an award granted to Jim Campbell, who is a campus supervisor at Napa High School. And I learned at that event that his son also worked with him in that role. So they're known as Jim and Big Jim, which I thought was really sweet and speaks to the culture at Napa High. And then, of course, the Napa County Teacher of the Year. We are very proud to congratulate Napa High's own Martha Calderon. So we are very much looking forward to seeing her advance to the statewide Teacher of the Year, and wish her the best of luck. And in our eyes, she's the winner. And this concludes my report. So Dr. Masetti, we now move on to the board reports, yes.
Oh, there you go. You can go first.
So we have the Board Representative Reports next, H2. And H2A is the Special Education Community Advisory Committee. The representative trustee Hart is not in attendance today, but I believe that they have not met. Next, H2B, the City of American Canyon Liaison Representatives. We have not met. H2C, City of Napa Liaison Representatives?
We have not met.
Has not met. And that brings me to H3, Superintendent and Executive Staff.
Great. Thank you, President Reiser. So, good evening, NVUSD trustees, staff, and community. Once again, congratulations to all of our retirees. We are so grateful for your years of service and dedication to the school district. The last few weeks have been filled with joyful and meaningful moments. As our school communities wrap up the 24-25 school year, I'd like to take a moment to share a few highlights with all of you. First, a heartfelt thank you to Principal Kim Tidal at Bel Air Elementary, Principal Kate Lindman at West Park Elementary, and Principal Ann Valerga at Silverado Middle School for welcoming me during my final formal site visits of the year. At all three schools, the energy, pride, and excitement among students and staff were palpable. I'm especially grateful to the teachers, like you, Ms. Edward, who opened their classrooms so I could observe students engaged in final projects, lessons, and celebrations of learning. It was a wonderful way to close out another year of growth and accomplishment. A special shout-out goes to Silverado Middle School. We hang out in the same places, trustee Water. If you'd had the opportunity to visit, if you've had the opportunity to visit Silverado, you may know that Principal Valerga organizes a phenomenal student ambassador program, where these students lead the tours of the schools of any of the visitors that come to campus. These student hosts are mature, professional, and deeply proud of their school. I always learn so much from them, not only about what's working well on campus, but also about the areas that they are actively working to improve. One of the student ambassadors, we hang out in the same places, and we know the same people, trustee Water, during my visit was an eighth grader named Angel. Was that who you were talking about? Who proudly shared that he and fellow students from Silverado and Snow had been working on films through our district's partnership with the Youth Cinema Project, known as YCP. I guess, were theatrical? Their work is being featured tonight, like you said, at Napa High School's Little Theater during a red carpet-style Film Festival, a gala event where students were encouraged to dress for the occasion. Don't get up and walk over there. You have to stay for the meeting. Where am I here? Even more exciting, some of these student-produced films were selected for screening at the Los Angeles Latino International Film Festival at the iconic TCL Chinese Theater in Hollywood on May 30th and June 1st. Angel was thrilled to tell me that his film will be shown at the festival, and that he will be traveling to Los Angeles with his family for this gala event. This is a powerful example of how our commitment to real-world learning, as discussed and alluded to in Strategy One of our strategic plan, is opening doors and, related to Strategy Two, preparing students for bright futures in college and careers. I want to read to you the names of the Snow Elementary films. Ocean Reef, Viva Fútbol, Life of a Flower, The Chocolate Que Zal, The Environment of Sea Animals, Two Ways, Basketball Bullies. And then the Silverado films, they have a little descriptor as well, in addition to the title. Fearful's Long Line. When her world turns unfamiliar, a fearful young girl must overcome her anxiety to take small steps toward courage and independence. And then Tape Number Four's Long Line. In an attempt to join an exclusive adventure club, one boy must face his fears of the supernatural in order to find the treasure of a lifetime. Angel, the eighth grader going to La Leif, the Film Festival in Los Angeles, the Latino Film Festival in Los Angeles, shared this quote. "I have hit a pivotal moment in my life, and I couldn't be more excited to accept the honor of being selected to attend the Latino Film Festival." Just today, I also witnessed another inspiring example of college and career readiness in action at McPherson Elementary during their second annual Career Day. I don't know if your sibling told you about that. No? Okay, that happened today. More than 30 community members volunteered to speak with students about their careers in fields such as politics, law enforcement, historic preservation, optometry, chiropractic care, athletics, and skilled trades like sheet metalwork. Students across all grade levels were engaged, curious, and excited to explore the many possibilities available to them. It was an excellent showcase of how early exposure to career pathways can spark ideas and aspirations. And this is all part of the Magnet Grant there at McPherson. Finally, over the past two weeks, we held the final meetings of the year for the Superintendent Parent Advisory Council, Superintendent Teacher Advisory Council, and our Inclusive and Welcoming Schools Steering Committee that President Reiser mentioned. I want to express my sincere appreciation to all the members of these important advisory groups. Your time, thoughtfulness, and partnership are instrumental in helping us grow and continuously improve as a district. Thank you for your ongoing support and commitment to our students and schools. As we near the end of another successful, successful school year, I look forward to celebrating many more milestones with you in the days ahead. I'm so proud and feel so honored and privileged to be wrapping up my seventh year as superintendent in this amazing school district. With that, we're going to hear from our Assistant Superintendents. And so we'll start off with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Thank you for the opportunity to present our retirees earlier this evening, and so I will forego my regular report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. And next, we have Assistant Superintendent Dr. Monica Ready, who oversees the Instructional Services Division.
Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member DeRazasifuentes, Superintendent Dr. Masetti, and NVUSD community. As we near the end of the school year, we are proud to share several recent examples of how NVUSD students, staff, and community partners are coming together to support safety, engagement, and learning across our district. First, thank you to all NVUSD staff for your dedication and commitment to supporting students throughout national, state, and local assessments. This important work is a result of a year-long focus on learning, growth, and building students' confidence to demonstrate their knowledge and skills. A special thank you to our Advanced Placement teachers for guiding students through rigorous coursework and creating supportive environments where they can experience the demands of college-level learning. Congratulations to all of our students. We are proud of your hard work and accomplishments. Over the past two weeks, the NVUSD Instructional Team hosted ALPS Advanced Learner Programs and Services Nights in Napa and American Canyon, highlighting the creativity and depth of learning experienced by our advanced learners. Throughout the year, students who qualify for the ALPS program based on the COGAT assessment have engaged in personalized, project-based learning using the Renzulli Learning Platform. With the support of our dedicated ALPS liaisons, these students worked on self-directed, high-interest projects, where they presented to school and district staff, families, and community members during the showcase events. These evenings were marked by excitement, engagement, and pride, as students demonstrated their learning and shared their passion. This initiative reflects Strategy One of our strategic plan, ensuring that all NVUSD students have equitable access to rigorous, high-quality instruction. Thank you to Executive Director Matt Manning, Mario Sullivan, and Fabiola Rodriguez Aguilar for their leadership and ongoing support of the ALPS program. Members of the NVUSD Student Advisory Council have spent the year reviewing LCAP data and planning projects in response to their analysis. One of their key initiatives came to life recently, as all middle-school sixth graders participated in school-based career fairs. With the support of the Napa Valley Education Foundation and Napa County Office of Education, these career fairs took place during the school day, on campus, and introduced sixth-grade students to a variety of employers and career pathways in our region. These early experiences in real-world learning provided students with a valuable opportunity to begin thinking about their future education and career goals. We are excited to expand our focus on career-aligned, real-world learning in the earlier grades. Thank you to Director Mario Landeros, and a big congratulations to our student advisory for their vision, leadership, and dedication to creating meaningful learning experiences for their peers. In collaboration with the Napa Police Department, Napa County Sheriff's Department, and Napa County Probation, the NVUSD Student Services Team recently delivered gang awareness presentations at Napa High School, Vinnich High School, and American Canyon High School. These events were also open to families of feeder, elementary, and middle schools, creating a broader opportunity to inform and engage our community. The presentations aim to educate parents and guardians on the early warning signs of gang involvement, equipping them with the tools and knowledge to proactively support their children and prevent gang-related behaviors. These efforts align with our Strategy Seven, where NVUSD seeks to create a comprehensive approach to improve school and district safety. We extend our gratitude to our dedicated partners at the Napa Police Department, Napa County Probation, and Napa County Sheriff's Office. And thank you to Director of Student Services, Rupi Bhattay, and Coordinator of Safety, Joanna Navarro, for their leadership and coordination of these important events. As we enter the final two weeks of the school year, we send our best wishes to all NVUSD students, staff, and families. We celebrate with you as students promote to the next grade level and graduate, and we wish everyone a joyful and restful summer ahead. That concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Ready. And next, and last, we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, who oversees Business and Operational Services.
The Business Services Team is finalizing a budget for the 25-26 fiscal year, which is scheduled to be presented to the Board in June. The Enrollment Team is continuing to prepare for the 25-26 school year. The team has been busy coordinating with families interested in attending sixth grade at Vishi for the upcoming school year, and assisting out-of-district families in completing the inter-district transfer process. On Wednesday, in the month of May, the Enrollment Center has a pop-up office at Donaldson Way Elementary School to help American Canyon families enroll easily. The expansion of the TK program is underway, with seven new TK classrooms opening in August to accommodate the additional 100 TK students expected to enroll in the program. We close in on our funding for Measure B and Measure A II. We officially received $80 million for Measure B and $12.5 million for A II. So we actually have cash in our account. It's no longer this theoretical amount of money. So very excited about that, and spending very quickly. So you'll see a contract on tonight's agenda for West Park to complete their campus modification work for the summer. Contractors are also actively getting ready for summer construction at our Summer Seven, and you can actually see that work happening now. For example, contractors are beginning to set up job-site trailers, and they have fencing delivered to make construction area as safe as possible. So you are definitely starting to see the transition to the summer program. Additionally, contractors will be at West Park this weekend, getting an early start, addressing dry rot. So you can say that officially, summer work has started. In maintenance and grounds, we're gearing up for graduations, getting, and getting ready to start summer projects that are planned. In operations, we're preparing for graduations also, and getting ready for the busy summertime. We have many projects planned that include deep cleaning, new carpeting, flooring, and classroom moves. Data Services has been busy this spring supporting sites with all the required testing. Physical fitness testing and LPAC testing are largely complete at this point, and sites are finishing up CASP and STAR testing this week. We want to thank all the teachers and site administrators who have played an important role in encouraging students to do their best and creating the best testing conditions possible. We look forward to sharing test results with the Board and the community in the future. The Technology Team is gearing up for a very busy summer, though we'll mostly focus on the implementation of the new Centennial Safety Badging System. We hope to have all physical installation complete in July, which will allow the project to seamlessly shift into the training phase. We are very excited about this exciting opportunity to increase safety response time for all district community members. On May 6, NVUSD launches first-ever AI Council, an innovative cross-functional team, including teachers, class-wide staff, including teachers, class-wide staff, site leaders, community school managers, and district administrators. This diverse group is collaborating to develop thoughtful and responsible AI guidelines for staff and students. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mangwala. President Reiser, that concludes staff reports for the evening.
Thank you. This brings us to Item I, the approval of the Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of items is requested by a board member. Should I do public comment first or do the motion? First, Ms. Green, is there any public comment online for our Consent Agenda?
There is no public comment on Consent Agenda items.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, could I please have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
A first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Martin. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Morales, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Student Board Member DeRazas Fuentez.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Jenkowitz.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to J on our agenda, Presentation and Discussion Items. Because we have already had the first presentation, we are now at J to A, the StudySync Adoption Recommendation for Middle School.
Okay, thank you very much. Looks like the microphone is on, yes. Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening on our recommendation for the continuation of StudySync as the MBUSD state adopted an approved instructional resource for middle school ELA. I am happy to be joined this evening by District Academic Specialist Kelly Miller, Silverado Middle School teacher Judy Edwards, and American Canyon Middle School teacher Julie Picard. Thank you for being with us this evening. This work connects to Theme One of our MBUSD Strategic Plan, which centers on rigorous, real-world learning experiences for students. And specifically, this presentation and recommendation support the literacy focus of Strategy One and the use of Common Core curricular resources and high-impact instructional practices. Connected to our strategic plan, we would like to take a moment to define authentic literacy, because literacy is such a key element of Strategy One, and as Trustee Martin recited a moment ago, our MBUSD mission as well. So authentic literacy involves building knowledge through content-rich, nonfiction texts while engaging students in purposeful reading, writing, and speaking tasks, grounded in evidence from both literary and informational texts. It emphasizes frequent interaction with complex texts and academic language they contain. Building knowledge through reading both informational and literary texts is critical to ensuring that students have something meaningful to write and speak about as they express their ideas, both orally and in writing. You will hear this evening from our presenters how we are working to provide authentic literacy experiences for our students in MBUSD. We will begin with an overview of the process involved in reviewing the updated version of StudySync as we determine whether to pilot other programs from the 2017 list of adopted materials or move forward with the purchase of the newest edition of StudySync. We're not presenting this evening a recommendation for a new adoption of new curricular resources. Rather, it is the purchase of the newest edition of our currently adopted middle school curricular resource. That's StudySync for ELA and middle school. Ms. Miller will share in depth that in California, we are awaiting the release of a new English Language Arts framework that will then be followed by the state adoption of instructional materials aligned to that new framework. In the meantime, we have reached the end of our current adoption cycle with StudySync, and we now need to purchase the instructional materials and the digital licenses. You will hear about the rationale for the decision and to continue with StudySync, along with the inclusion of core novels, the implementation of a guaranteed and viable curriculum, which means that instructional outcomes for a given course are clear and that there is a plan to achieve those outcomes within the span of a year. So thank you. I will now turn the reins over to Kelly Miller, who will begin with a brief overview of our current context in the state and in the district. You're over here. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Manning. I'd like to start with a little bit of context. We don't make these decisions in a vacuum. So if you want to go time travel with me for a moment, we adopted in middle school for our ELA curriculum, StudySync, in 2018. That was a seven-year commitment. That's pretty typical for an adoption. And that was the StudySync 2017 edition. In the meantime, our high schools were hard at work making up their own resources for quite some time. We finally adopted Core Curricular Resources last year. And within that time, we learned that StudySync had updated their materials. So we were using 2017 StudySync for quite some time in our middle schools. Our middle school teachers, one of them was a Silverado teacher, not one who's here today, but at one time looked over my shoulder when we were piloting for high school and said, "Is that the same StudySync we have? That looks different." What we learned from that experience is that StudySync has updated materials. Our middle school teachers were interested in what it had to offer. So over the course of this past year, middle school teachers have been using the newest edition of StudySync to test the waters. See, how does it go? Do we like it? We knew that at the end of this year, we would need to make a decision. That decision needed to be either we continue with what we have, the newest edition of StudySync, or we pilot something new. As Director Manning mentioned, the other kind of missing piece here is curriculum, curricular resources are made in line with frameworks. And our framework that we're working with now was from 2014. Usually, those frameworks are adopted every seven or updated every seven to 10 years, but due to many circumstances, we're still waiting on that from the state. So new curricular resources that are updated to meet a new framework don't exist yet because that framework is still the same one we had from 10 years ago. We will await the new framework, and we will await publishers developing new materials that align to that framework. In the meantime, we need something. We do need Core Curricular Resources for our students and for our teachers. So our process this year was, I worked with our fantastic middle school ELA leads. We knew this was coming. We knew at the end of last year that we would have the newer resources to work with for at least one year to see how we liked them. We have some of the leads in the room here today. We met a couple of times during this year to do a pulse check and see, how was it going? Do we need to look at other materials? Or do we like what we're using at this time? We convened in October, and at that time, leads were really clear about the strength of the updated curricular resource we were using. But I have to be honest, we were curious. We wanted to know, are there other things out there that might better meet our needs? We just want to peek. We'd like to look. No matter what, ELA leads were clear that they desired a full commitment, no matter what direction they chose. And in the meantime, we continued monitoring our implementation with StudySync. So we reconvened in January. We literally sat around the table with hard copy books of three curricular resources that had a green Ed Reports rating. That means they meet the highest expectations for curricular resources for our middle schoolers. Those were HMH, Amplify, and StudySync. And we passed them around the table. We opened the books. We said, "How would our students like these texts? What do we think about how they're laid out?" And at the end of that meeting, it was decided we'd like to stick with what we have for a number of reasons. One, the updated materials with StudySync have made some really good changes. The pacing is more realistic for a middle school classroom. There are now more novel studies, complete novel studies, integrated into StudySync. And the writing and the skills lessons have also undergone some changes that were responsive to, I'm pretty sure what many teachers were telling McGraw-Hill, like, "Hey, these could be changed." And we saw some improvements. So one is that the skills lessons in StudySync are more manageable. They make more sense. In addition, I'm a real fan of seeing exemplars of student writing with other students so they can go through and annotate, look at what does good look like. The newer version of StudySync does a fine job of providing exemplars of student essays that teachers don't have to make up themselves. They have them there and can go through them with students. So we decided to recommend continuing with the 2023 StudySync until we have a new framework and new curricular resources available. Our rationale here is we do feel like StudySync is a good support for authentic literacy. Also, the district alignment between six and 12 is really strong. It's really promising. We are moving toward guaranteed and viable curriculum in our secondary schools, and it is hard work, and it takes a lot of dedication to not chase every new thing we see in front of us. We're trying to stay the course. We're enjoying being able to be aligned between middle school and high school with our curricular resources, with pacing, with a set of novels that don't repeat. For example, if you have two different curricular resources in middle school and high school, it's very common that one curricular resource will recommend a book for middle school. The other will recommend the same one for high school. It gets confusing. It's frustrating. We don't need to put ourselves in that situation right now. We're also using common assessments from StudySync, and that's been very promising. One of the things we're really enjoying with the more updated StudySync is that it has novel supports. And I'm proud to say, somehow, somehow this happened last time, too, right when I got to this slide. You're so kind. I have it there. I think I'm going to make it. Yeah, thank you. We've been working really hard to align what novels we teach, grade six through 11. We value novels. We value having them in print. And teachers have said, "Hey, we need to actually have them in our classrooms and say, 'This is a seventh-grade novel.' This is a 10th-grade novel," so that we don't have teachers reading something that the next teacher might be teaching the following year. We have named two core novels in every grade level, six through 11. Most of them are supported by StudySync. We do have a lot of teachers who have said, "Hey, I can agree to these two core novels that we're teaching system-wide at a certain grade level, but there's other ones at our school that we want to name as important that we're committed to. We're calling it Two Core Plus One More." Our agreements are that every student in our system, grade six through 11, will read these novels in their ELA classrooms. The One More Additional Novel is optional for our middle schools, but they now have the option to adopt another core novel just for their site that all other students will read. StudySync also has integrated reading and writing, so that means in addition to longer-form reading, like novels, and longer-form writing, like essays, there's a lot of read and write, and read and write. It's called the Integrated Reading and Writing Model. We see the same thing in middle school and high school. As I said previously, the skills instruction and the most updated version of StudySync shows some really nice improvements. It has a gradual release of responsibility model that is clear. There's a model for students. There's building background knowledge. There's vocabulary. There's brief conversation. And then an opportunity for students to practice. I'd like to turn it over to Julie Picard, our American Canyon Middle School Lead, to tell you about her experience with StudySync.
Okay. Hi, I'm Julie Picard. Nice to be here. Nice to see you. And I teach eighth grade at American Canyon Middle School. Okay, so what I'm going to go over is the book Refugee, and it's a core novel for eighth grade, and all the students read it. And the book by Alan Graz, he does other novels as well, and it's the same format, which, once the kids read this one, they get really excited about others, which is very nice as a teacher. And the three characters, one's from Syria, they're all refugees. One's from Syria, the other one is from Cuba, and the other one is from Berlin during the Holocaust. So it's different, you know, from the 1930s to 1998, and then 2005, maybe. And it talks about their experience. They're all about 13, which are, you know, same grade. So right away, there's an attraction. And just like how they have to leave their home, why do they have to leave their home? And the way we use it is we put the kids in groups by, "Okay, you're going to read about Isabel. You're going to read about Joseph, and you're going to read about Mahmoud." And then we have conversations about it. And they read and they write. With StudySync, they do have a novel study where we created, well, we didn't create them. We took them from StudySync because they are Common Core questions that kids can expect on the CASP test. And we try to get them every opportunity to do well on those tests because they're very hard. We're enjoying this year as well, We're enjoying this year as well, working with Kelly and Judy and the rest of the team. The assessments that StudySync has, because they literally look like CASP. You know, it's the same platform. They click the same buttons. They can highlight, because if you've taught before and it's the first time you put a kid in front of something like that, they're just highlighting everything. And, you know, it's like the novelty's worn off by the time they take the test, which is really nice. So after, like I said, they read, then they write in argumentative paragraph, or we've used it for expository and argumentative, so they can cite evidence. And they really like the book, and that's exciting. Some extended writing projects that we've done are sharing the information. The kids share the information with the other kids about the other characters, maybe just small group activities. We also align, we take stories from StudySync, like Dear Miss Breed, which is about Japanese internment. And the main character there is from Southern California, and a lot of kids have been there, so that really pulls them in. We have The Boy in the Striped Pajamas, which is a horrible, great story, if you've read that. So these are excerpts, but it gives them just enough that they're like, wow, that really happened, and we can relate that to Joseph. And then Farewell to Manzenar is another one. So we've really enjoyed it, and StudySync has given us a lot of flexibility in reading novels as well as short stories. And I know that Judy, because she's my friend and also teaches at Silverado, we talk about, it's so nice to have that common commonality where we can talk, well, what did you do with this? Or how did your kids like that? And then I know Judy's going to talk about short story narrative. Yeah, so this is expository, explanatory, and then Judy will bring up narrative. Thank you.
Hi, I am Judy Edwards, and I teach eighth grade language arts at Silverado Middle School. And we also do use the Refugee book. And it is nice because we walk on Sundays, and they'll be finding out, what are you doing with the book? Where are you with the book? And we, because we're following it, we're doing it at the same time. And it's really nice to be able to have that communication. In the fall, there is a narrative unit where we read and analyze excerpts from StudySync. The nice part about having a lot of shorter excerpts to read is we can expose the students to different authors, different writing types, different literary styles. And we do this in the fall, particularly focusing on how authors create suspense. So with each excerpt, we can look at, how did the author create suspense? What writing techniques did they use? How did they present the story? Through dialogue, through character development? And we look at all those elements and just the narrative elements in general. Then when the students are done, they write their own suspenseful narrative. And so their goal is to write it, but be able to explain what narrative techniques did they use? How did they create suspense? Did they use dialogue to develop the characters? And they have, they learn about story maps. And so all of that work early in the year builds the foundation. So when we read stories throughout the rest of the year, even the books, like Refugee or other stories, they know how a story is formatted. So we can keep coming back to that and go in deeper understanding with the stories they're reading. So within StudySync, one of the hard parts with the class, with the levels you have, from students who are just learning English to the students who are reading above grade level, is we know that the questions and the writing prompts are on grade level. And so we're not lowering it. But for the kids, for a lot of our kids who don't speak English, they can translate the stories into their primary language. And so as we're reading and having the conversations, they have that option on the computer for that translation so that they can access it too and then become, engage more in the conversation. Because a lot of them are very fluent in their native language. And being able to access it, then they can participate more. And it kind of helps bring everybody at all levels together. Another thing we do later in the year is there's a big focus on making inferences. So we do that with Refugee, with all the other excerpts. There's a lot of poetry, like The Road Not Taken. And the kids will continually do questions like, how does the speaker feel about the road? He didn't take side evidence from your text to support your answer. So that's another skill that we're working on throughout the entire year. One thing this fall, and I will skip ahead to the next one, is as an ELA lead with our PLC groups, this fall, we are talking about, what are you working on in sixth grade or seventh grade? Well, we're all doing narrative because we are using StudySync. So we brought all this, we all brought examples in of our student work, and we could lay it out. And we're able to look, what are the sixth graders doing? What are the seventh graders? What are the eighth graders? And it helped align our expectations of what they should be doing, but also how far they have come. Again, in December, January, we were all doing, working on citing evidence and creating arguments. So we pulled it all together, and we were looking at how students were able to cite evidence. Well, they found the evidence, but they couldn't explain it. Well, by eighth grade, you could see that explanation coming. So by us all using the same curriculum, and even though it's different stories and different skills, we were really able to see what the kids are doing and starting to have that cross-grade level conversations. And it's really nice to be able to have with people at other schools too, because we're doing the same things, even though it will look different in every class you may walk into. As we were looking at possibly adopting, I did talk to my teachers onsite, and their thought was, we really like the units we're finally developing. We're getting comfortable. We're starting to have these conversations. We don't want anything new. Every year, there's enough new things coming in, but this is a really good foundation to build off of. So, and the balance of novels and shorter excerpts. If I have students who really enjoy The Striped Pajamas, I've got copies in the classroom, and I'll give it to them. They'll read the whole book. Right now, we're reading The Last Quinteza at an open house. I have parents come in, oh, we've been hearing about this book. And so, but it's pulling in different kids than some of the shorter excerpts bring in. So I feel like within StudySync, between the novels and the excerpts, we're exposing our students to a lot of authors and different types of writing to find what works best for them.
Thank you, Judy and Julie. These women not only taught all day, they will go back and do the same thing tomorrow before 8:00 a.m., and they do the difficult and joyful work of leading students, but also leading their peers as ELA teacher leads. So I really appreciate you two being here tonight. Thank you. I began with a small history lesson, and I'd like to wrap up with another history lesson. I stood before you last year about this time, and I used this slide. And I came back to it recently and went, oh, we're doing what we said we wanted to do. And I just wanted to elevate that. I value being a person of integrity and leading folks who say, we're going to go after this, and we're doing it. So last year in 2024, we said we would transition to Middle School StudySync 2023 and examine it and see how it goes. And that's what we've been doing. We also said we would review the novel recommendations that middle school and high school teachers had made and identify two core in grades six through 11 that align with StudySync. We've done it. We also sought to identify one supplemental book for grades six through 11, so that one more that teachers say, hey, my students really, really are engaged. Every time we read this book at our school, we want to name it as something we always do in the 10th grade or the 11th grade. It's done. And that we would purchase hard copies of books. I've got, I've got quotes coming in, and I'm sure you guys will see that as board members. But I'm really proud of the work that we have continued to do through this. We will continue to support integrity and implementation. We will have professional development aligned to common pacing and assessments coming up. That's important because any curricular resource gets time to, takes time to get to know, even if it's the same thing you've been using for many years and there's an updated version. There is always more learning to be done in the company of your colleagues, especially that grades six through 11 vertical articulation. We need to support time for teachers to learn that and do it well together. We also will be buying print copies of novels in classrooms so that teachers and students can literally turn the page together. And we have StudySync print materials coming in formats that are responsive to classroom needs. I want to clarify what that means because it's really specific. If you purchase a core curricular resource that comes with workbooks, you have the option to have, in the case of StudySync, there are six units, so six little workbooks show up per student every year, whether you use them or not, and whether or not you have space for them. Since we have had the benefit of using StudySync now for some time, we have teachers who have decided, you know, I love having students write in the workbooks. I want them to have highlighters out and pencils and writing in the margins. We also have a number of teachers who have said, no, what we value is having students open something with a hardback on it that will live in our classroom so they can do the digital work by typing and answering questions, but we want to turn a hard copy, hardcover book in our, in our classroom. So with continuing with StudySync, we are being responsive to those requests from teachers, so we are honoring both the format that they prefer to use and the amount of space they have in their classrooms. Thank you so much for your time this evening. I will take your questions and discussion or turn it over to Director Manning. Where are you?
Yeah, we're happy to take any questions or comments from trustees.
Thank you so much. Questions or discussion or comments from trustees? I'm just, I'm looking down the whole die as trustee water. I'm not trying to single you out, although I imagine you have something to say.
Okay, look, yeah, always. But you know what I did bring, bring here? I copied out the Common Core California, you know, standards. And at the bottom of the introduction, page four, where it's been since, you know, 2013, it says, 70% of student reading across the grade should be informational, meaning all subjects. The burden is not just on the English language, ELA teachers, but everyone should be doing it. And eighth grade, for eighth grade, literary is 45%, informational is 55%. That means your math, your science, your social studies teachers should be in on that and not just... And I hope, I hope that that's what we're doing. And of course, English teachers should be teaching informational too. But, you know, when I was working over there, it became interpreted that 11th and 12th grade teachers had to teach 70% informational. You know, we're, we're being encouraged to do more and more. And the other subjects, I, you know, you all keep coming here and smiling and, you know, pitching this. And I saw you at the meeting earlier this week, and, you know, I appreciate your good humor. And, and it seems like, you know, the English teachers are really working very, very hard on this. And, but it does affect, you know, all the subjects. And of course, if they can't, if they can't read and write coherently, they won't do as well in their other subjects. But I think all the teachers in all the disciplines should be pitching in, and, you know, everybody helping each other. I'm, I'm a little happier about this after seeing it in action. And I walked in, and I did not see children with their faces glued to a screen, listening to a recording. I saw two engaged teachers and, you know, some interaction and kids discussing it, you know, together. And they seemed to like it. They did seem to like it. And, and one of the things that appeals to me is that it's not, I still would rather people just picked up a book and, you know, went at it. But I understand that we have to have something like this. This is what we, the state says that we need to use, have something like this. And what I like about it is that the teachers can tailor it to their particular classroom. They don't have to do every single activity, answer every single question, and do everything the same way, and, which is good, because otherwise, the students would find it predictable and boring. So that's fine. You know, I'll, I'll talk later on about, not tonight, about 11th grade, 11th grade literary selections. But I think that, I like, I like seeing Shakespeare in there somewhere. And I think that if you could get students to read Farewell to Manzenar in middle school, that's a pretty challenging book. Good for you. You know, and it would be good for them too. But I did, in the classrooms I visited, I did like what I saw. So I'm not going to yell and scream about it. And, you know, thank you for your, look, for years, I had people complaining to me about it. But this was before people were teaching novels along with a book. It seemed to me to be a synthetic sort of course, where it was nothing but excerpts, and there was nothing full-length. I also, visiting the Silverado Library, it looks like you've got a very engaged librarian who's ready to pitch in and help the kids find books that they're interested in and, you know, help the teachers find supplemental books to enrich the lessons. So that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments? Trustee Jenkins?
I know I preface every presentation with, I've never been a teacher, but I'm outnumbered right now. For someone who has never taught in the classroom, who has heard feedback from the community, this was the best presentation that I've heard in my eight years, to connect all the dots of understanding, to understand not only the why of implementation, but the value and the potential impact. You connected all of the dots, and that was incredibly helpful for me. I have a very brief anecdotal story that I think is applicable here. I got a call from a teacher who has been a big advocate for novels in the classroom. And I asked her about the number of, I had heard some feedback, maybe from a trustee that just spoke about the number of novels and wanting to increase that number and what did that look like? And the, the teacher said the following, that in the classroom, she needed support, that this tool could offer support. And the reason she needed support is that there was great diversity in the classroom, diversity of learners. And to teach more, she felt that there needed to be real fidelity in the process of teaching the novel, and that she wanted to teach all the components, you know, content and development and syntax and vocabulary and, you know, all of the things. And that by using a tool like this and then being able to apply it to a number of novels that was manageable, where she felt that she was able to teach everything that she wanted to with this particular book, she thought it was a, and this is a teacher that is very vocal. She thought this was a good number and that this was a very complimentary tool. And that was helpful to me to understand it. But this presentation was, you, you really did take all the... I do have one question, just because I'm not familiar with all of this. If there is this framework that is going to be, whatever it is, what is it, a year away? Two years away? Do we know?
We don't have a date yet.
So you don't have a date? So, so there's no way to determine, are there different contracts? Can you do a short-term contract? Will this match the, I mean, the framework? Do we know that StudySync for middle schools, it's one of the, it's within the offerings? So do we know that those offerings, and I apologize, I don't know this, do they stay consistent?
No, they don't, they don't, they don't necessarily stay consistent. StudySync may appear on, on the new list, once the, once the new framework is released.
And if it doesn't?
If it doesn't, we, we're moving forward with only a four-year agreement to align with the high school StudySync.
Okay.
And we're confident that within four years, without a framework, a date of release, publishers then have to follow up with aligning curricular resources to the framework. We would have to spend a year going through an adoption process. So four years with StudySync feels like a really good...
Okay, thank you. And then one other clarification question. You, I believe you said the, it was 2000?
2023.
No, when you first adopted StudySync.
2018.
2018. Is there, in middle school? No, it was earlier than that, wasn't it? Okay. Do they not send you notification that there's a new iteration? Is there not communication between StudySync and the districts that they serve to let you guys know, hey, we're introducing this new iteration? Are you interested? Is that communication?
There is. I'm not sure if there's, had been communication from StudySync from McGrath Hill previously, but sometimes publishers will reach out. Sometimes they, they, they won't do that. But this is a fairly new 2023 version, so it's not been, you know, a long time since.
Okay, that was it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would just add to that, that we, we became aware, there, because there wasn't the interest, and there was some with the previous version, we weren't actively seeking out at the middle school level a new version until our high school went through the adoption and we learned of the new process. So that's what brought it on for us.
And I'm assuming that the high school teachers are very happy that there's now a, there's alignment between middle school and high school.
I would say that high school teachers are happy to learn that, based on the work that we're doing this year around guaranteeing a viable curriculum, aligning around Common Core standards, the priority standards, they're excited to have students come into high school with a higher level of readiness for the rigor of high school content.
Perfect answer.
Thank you.
Other trustees?
So two things have sold me about this presentation. And the first is that the, you've said that StudySync has like, it, there's a component of the website that's very similar to the CASP and what the CASP looks like. That is phenomenal, because in my experience, it's one thing to get the students to read. It's another thing to get them to spend the amount of time it takes to do well on the CASP. And given the fact that our entire performance as a district is determined by the CASP, which goes into the California School Dashboard, I'm glad that there's a direct correlation between what the students are doing and the CASP. The second thing that I think is great is that teachers, it's kind of hard to get teachers on the same page, because a lot of teachers have been doing something for a really long time. It's hard to get them to change. And if you have, if you have teachers that can come together and begin to do the same thing, and like, I loved seeing the, that you can see student progress across the three grades because the, the teachers are teaching the same thing. And that's, that's just phenomenal. So I move to approve whenever we get there. Lastly, I, I actually have experience teaching StudySync because I did my student teaching in 2020 at Redwood Middle School. And I just want to say, The Lottery by Shirley Jackson is very disturbing. It's very disturbing. So, and it might, it might be a good idea to go through and read the New Yorker article about all the, all the not-so-pleasant mail she got when that was published in the 50s, I think. Anyway, thank you very much.
It got the most, it got the most, it remains the story in the New Yorker that got the most letters to the editor, that, you know, provoked the most correspondence.
Thank you. Good enough.
Okay, trustee two?
So I'm just glad that we have something in the interim that we can adopt, that it isn't such a large learning curve for not only our teachers, but for our students, because I know some of them have already been using StudySync, although it's the old version. And I will have an eighth grader next year, hopefully in Ms. Picard's class. So maybe I'll come and visit and ask him how he likes it.
Thank you.
Student board member, anything? No?
Well, it sounds that it has improved since, you said the new version, because I, I was part of that, I think, in sixth grade, I think also like 2018. And it was like difficult to engage in it, just because it was online. But the way that, because it was all experts, yeah, was she was saying. So I think the more, like the full novel use is like, it's a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you. We've heard that feedback and are happy that the program has responded with more engaging activities and that we have the core novels to accompany StudySync.
Okay, thank you. My comments are going to go a little bit beyond this particular program that we are renewing our agreement with. But first of all, I just want to thank Director Manning and Assistant Superintendent Ready for joining my meeting with Dr. Masetti yesterday, because I did have a lot of questions around this particular set of materials and more broadly around our secondary ELA sort of big picture. You know, I had sat on the curriculum committee for several years and had heard a lot of difficulties about StudySync. And my daughters, who are now in college, also experienced the other version of it in middle school. And the feedback that I got from them was not rave reviews. And, you know, I know that we have a shared, a shared commitment to providing engaging instruction to our students. And so I just got curious about, well, is this really the best that we can do here? And how are we... And how are we addressing and mitigating those sort of obstacles to engagement? I think, first of all, you know, we know that a tool is only as good as the educator using it, and the support that they get in implementation. So I was really heartened to hear and see in the presentation just a real focus on implementing with integrity, and supporting our teachers in understanding how to use the different aspects of the program. You know, when I left the classroom in 2010, and the cutting-edge technology was a document projector. And it arrived in my classroom in the spring of my last year, and I was like, oh, my gosh, how does this even work? So I, it's, it sort of hurts my brain to think about all that you, as educators, have to contend with, but also understanding that the flip side of that is that the embedded resources of all varieties are real time savers. And we really want that for our educators, because we know how hard you work. So I have also been sort of, you know, swayed and impressed by the responses that I got from our instructional team, and also from this presentation. And I also want to take a moment to shout out our teacher leaders, and thank you for taking on that extra load of being a leader of your peers, and being here with us at 9:15 on a school night. So on that note, I will try my best to be as brief as I can with the rest of what I have to say. I think there is a risk with a digital platform, that it can be implemented, and if it's not supported well, it can kind of turn into like a plug-and-play, where our classrooms turn into sort of like an asynchronous learning hub with adult monitoring. And so I think, partly because I'm old and I'm overhead projector teacher generation, that fear looms for me as a board member. I just think, you know, is this really, are we examining the potential risks as well as the rewards and the benefits? The streamlining and the alignment and the predictability of the platform from sixth grade to 10th? I think that could really give a comfort level to our learners and to our teachers. So there is a lot to be said for it. But I did bring up in our conversation just my concern about, as the curricular landscape is now almost completely digital, at secondary, our kids are going from class to class to class. And so each teacher might say, oh, well, I only spent, you know, 50% of my instructional minutes doing digital interface, but thinking more broadly, what is that experience across the school day for our secondary kids like? You know, we've had community members, like Mr. Kelly, who was here earlier, raise concerns about, you know, the responsible use of technology. And so I think that that's something that's more broadly, I know it's under consideration with our instructional team, because Director Manning and I have talked about it. And, you know, the request from the community members was focused first on our youngest learners, rightly so, because their brains are so much less developed, and there are very clear guidelines about digital time. But I think about our secondary students, and how they're going from class to class. And then we know that they're, you know, in high school at least, they're probably checking their phones on their passing periods, and then they're going home, and maybe they're doing digital interface for their homework. And then they're probably having some screen time, you know, on social media or TV shows or what have you. So I just wanted to raise this as a more global issue for our instructional team to take on. And I did make the suggestion, I thank you for considering it, that that be wrapped into the instructional framework work. Because responsible use of technology in education is curriculum agnostic, but it impacts and touches all of our learners. So that was one topic that I wanted to raise. And then the other one really was, you know, I share trustee Waters' concern about a steady diet of excerpts only, not really inspiring a love of reading in kids. And, you know, we have, you know, close reading, where we're reading, and then we're going back with another purpose, and then we're going back with a third purpose. And I understand that there, that it is possible to maintain engagement there. But I wanted to share an analogy from my longtime mentor and old boss, who was the dean of the Graduate School of Education at Berkeley. His name is P. David Pearson. He's a real thought leader in the field of literacy, and in particular, reading comprehension. And he says, you know, it's helpful to think about literacy, and in particular, reading, but writing, I think it applies to writing as well, like, learning that is like learning basketball. It is a set of discrete skills that all have to work together at the same time in order to perform this activity. And he said, imagine if you had a basketball camp, and the kids all arrived on the first day, and they were all gathered together, and you said, okay, great, this is going to be so fun. Week number one, we're only going to do dribbling. Week two, we're going to do dribbling, and then we're going to work some passing in. And by Friday, we might do a little free throws. And, you know, I think by week three or four, we'll get a few scrimmages in there. None of those kids are going to have a good time. They're going to be on the phone calling their parents, saying, get me home, this camp sucks. And I, you know, the pendulum has swung across the span of my teaching career and my career in education. And the over-focus on the dribbling and passing drills robs kids of the experience of the joy of reading. And so I have said many times in the curriculum committee and in different conversations that we can't lose sight of, the end goal is not to be able to say that they have met all of these state standards, and that we can show mastery of these discrete skills. For me, the end goal is that we have empowered students with the skills they need to access information in all kinds of texts, but also to be an engaged and curious citizen of the world. And so I raised in that conversation sort of questions about how, beyond the StudySync, and I was happy to hear Ms. Edwards talk about, well, this is a great foundation for us to build off of. And of course, I am very heartened by the inclusion and the kind of standardization of three novels per year, three full-length novels. But what I would encourage is for us to continue to keep our eye on also the independent reading, because it is important, and we've talked about excerpts compared to full-length novels. Kids need to have the experience of going, beginning, middle, and end of a book, seeing the entire arc, seeing what that is like, feeling the accomplishment of finishing a book. But they also, in my view, hopefully, have the experience of wanting to choose a book that is interesting to them and at their level. And we know, and this is inarguable, that the number of minutes and the hours that students spend with their eyes on a text that is engaging to them, that they want to be reading, and is at a level that is accessible to them, is what strengthens reading. In the same way, you don't learn a language by reading some vocabulary lists. You only get better at a language by practicing and using it. And so I guess that's my other concern and request for the balance within the classrooms. And again, I'm not speaking just about middle school and StudySync, but just in general, that we not lose sight as we are focusing on priority standards and guaranteed and viable curriculum, and that students can all engage in, that we are not losing that aspect of literacy. Because my goal, maybe not all of our graduates are going to have the size emotional support book, pile of unread books by my bed that I have, but my hope is that our graduates will leave enjoying reading, and it being something that they will take forward into their lives in whatever way suits them. So I'm, I, my concerns have been allayed about this program. I also understand the distinction here, where there were no new choices from when we made the choice, or when you all made the choice in 2017. I wasn't here yet. So it all makes sense to me to renew and stay consistent. But I just wanted to surface those sort of ideas that I have. So thank you for indulging me.
My answer, just a couple of your concerns, one because I didn't love.
To the mic.
I didn't love StudySync when we got it. I'm like, there's too much, it takes forever. It was very clunky, we had to click all over, and it has gotten better. And I really don't know any of the teachers who do just StudySync. And a lot of the stories, even the short stories, we copy and paste them, and yeah, it's old school, but so am I. So we copy and paste them and put them in like a Google Doc. Or many times, give me a piece of paper. It's like, we don't even have days where we use a laptop. We're using StudySync, but it's like, no, you're going to write your answer down. Because I'm with you 100%. I don't, the kids don't come in and automatically open their laptop in the classroom. They're like, are we going to need these today? Do I have to take it out of my backpack? So it's not an everyday, but there is a learning curve. And Kelly is really good at getting us together, because those of us who've worked through it, because some people were like, I just don't like this, I'm not going to use it, I'm going to keep doing my thing, and that's fine. But now that we've, it's kind of shaped more into the two nodules, and then teach what you want. Like, we're reading The Tempest right now. It's not a part of StudySync, there's Shakespeare in StudySync, I think I brought that up before. But like, we're reading The Tempest, we've read The Tempest, and now they're going to act out like a monologue. So, but we still use the StudySync, knowing that we're in line as teachers, like, we want to make sure this is grade level and everything. But then I know they're going to read Shakespeare in ninth grade, so at least they've had a little exposure, and we're having fun with it. So I think it's a tool, like you all have said, it's not the be-all, end-all at all. So I understand your concerns, because I had them as well.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that additional insight. I would love to, yes.
Thank you very much, and I just want to thank one more time Kelly Miller for her leadership of the process, and the teacher leaders for being here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're now going to just take a, or do you want to power through? It is a short action item.
Very short, it's up to the board.
Power through or break? Okay, never mind, we're not taking a break. We don't need breaks. Okay, so this brings us to K, action items. K1, General Services. K1A, Adoption of California School Board Association's Recommended Policy Updates, March 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
The first from trustee two, a second from trustee Martin. Mister, Ms. Green, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, any discussion? Student board member, DeRessa Sifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K2, Facility Improvement. K2A, FID 7.5-25, Request for Surplus Portable Classrooms.
Move to approve.
Second.
The first from trustee two, second from trustee Martin. Ms. Green, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you, any discussion? Student board member, DeRessa Sifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K2B, FID 7.6-25, Contract with LEA Relocation Services.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee two, second from trustee Martin. Ms. Green, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Seeing none, student board member, DeRessa Sifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K2C, FID 18.10-25, Contract with Murray Building.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee two, a second from trustee Martin. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student board member, DeRessa Sifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K3, Instructional Services. K3A, Adoption of Revised Board Policy and New Administrative Regulation, 5131.8, Mobile Communication Devices.
Move to approve.
First from trustee two, a second from trustee Jenkowitz. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Seeing none, student board member, DeRessa Sifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K3B, Core English Language Arts Instructional Materials Adoption and Purchase to Middle Schools. For middle schools.
Trustee Martin, would you like to?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
The preemptive has finally arrived at the agenda. First from trustee Martin, second from trustee two. Is there any public comment for this item, Ms. Green?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you. Student board member, DeRessa Sifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K3C, Memorandum of Understanding with AIM HI.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from trustee two, a second from trustee Martin. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you. Student board member, DeRessa Sifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K3D, Revised Course of Study for Napa Valley Adult Education, Ask 12 Computer Applications.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee two, a second from trustee Martin. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you. Student board member, DeRessa Sifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K3E, New Course of Study for Napa Valley Adult Education, Careers in Hospitality.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee two, a second from trustee Martin. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student board member, DeRessa Sifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K3F, New Course of Study for Napa Valley Adult Education, Computer Skills. Habilidades en computación.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee two, second from trustee Martin. Ms. Green, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student board member, DeRessa Sifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K4, Operational Services. K4A, FMO 27.01.2025, Agreement with Mixis Services, Inc.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee two, a second from trustee Martin. Ms. Green, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student board member, DeRessa Sifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K4B, Request to Surplus School Bus.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee two, a second from trustee Martin. Ms. Green, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student board member, DeRessa Sifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. We have L, Information. L1, General Services. L1A, Curriculum and Student Support Committee. There are no minutes attached. Oh, there are minutes attached, thank you very much. Is that the only one?
No.
Oh, thank you. And then we have also L1B, the Facilities and Technology Committee. There are also minutes attached. I forgot to ask for public comment. Are there, Ms. Green, is there public comment for either of those minutes items?
There is no public comment.
Are there minutes?
No.
The minutes for facilities, are they attached?
No.
Because we just took the meeting, they'll be attached next week. Or you're.
Okay.
Only for one, L1A.
Okay. So those are the only minutes that are attached for our committees. That brings us to M, Additional Suggestions and Comments from Board Members and Superintendent.
I have one. I forgot to say it, but while I was sitting with the students at Silverado, a math teacher came over, very excited. His name is Keith, and he showed me his most recent test scores and for a class, and they had improved dramatically. He highlighted them in green and was showing them to me. He was in a really good mood.
For the star assessment?
Star math.
The star math assessment?
Yeah, he was very excited about it.
Fantastic.
I predict we're going to have a lot of green.
Good.
You heard it here, folks. Okay, anything else from the board members? Suggestions or future board, future, that brings us to N, Future Agenda Items. Any suggestions, trustees? Okay, we are now to O, Adjournment.